Gentlemen, I call this meeting to honor today for our June 12, 2024 board meeting. Welcome everybody here, everybody here, and if there's anybody in the virtual world today, welcome you also. Our first item on our agenda would be budget discussion. Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn that over to you.
All right. I don't know where the board would like to begin. If you'd like to begin with the county budget or the school budget.
It was a board's pleasure.
Johnny, start with the county.
County?
Hi.
All right. Provided to you some areas in which could possibly reduce the budget. There may be others that you want to discuss, and please let me know if you want to talk about those further. But we can, if it's all right, we'll just jump right into this list here and go over First item is under the county admin. We had put in a position for finance specialist that is going to be identified as a critical position in the upcoming forensic audit. It's going to be a recommendation as far as succession planning. But if the board wishes, that would be one area. That $84,006.85 does include the salary and benefits. Next line is under professional services under the county attorney. It was requesting an $18,000 increase. That line item had not been increased since 2021, when the original contract was implemented. Next item is under 1401, under IT, under IT contracts. Feel like we can reduce that by $15,922. There is one item that we are looking at. It's an RDA module that we would like to keep in there for purchase orders.
Did you, didn't you have some money left over from the ARPA funds that was going to buy one of those software programs?
We, we don't have any other room for software.
Okay.
What is remaining is it's a little less than $600,000 in ARPA, and we feel like all of that is going to be used for the school sewer extension. Next item, 1401, 5203 telecommunications under IT. The county has a VITA line that we are no longer using, so we feel like we can reduce that line item by that much. Under 1401, 7,101, IT computer equipment. We were looking at doing some more rotational of the computer hardware, so we feel like we can reduce that by 18,940. Under judicial administration, under juvenile court telecommunications, Mr. Haley has been working on some of the internet connections to that particular office, and feel like we can remove that VITA line as well and Verizon line. There were some additional Verizon costs there that we feel like can be some savings. So it would be a $13,000 cut. Under public safety, deputy position, possible reduction. That amount does include the salary and benefits. That's $77,394.90. Under the building department, 3401, 3,007, building advertising. Reduce the advertising to by $3,200, and that would leave a little bit left in, in that line item. Still under building, under 50, line item 5203 telecommunications. A lot of what happens with building and zoning cost or transfer from, not transferred, but used either out of building or out of planning. So if you see it in one and not the other, it's because it's been taken out of planning or and/or building. So telecommunications out of that one was reduced by 4,500. Building office supplies comes out of planning, so that was reduced by 5,000. And then the building vehicle supplies would level fund that line item. Under public works, the 4302, 1,001, reduce that by the additional position for the janitorial position. Again, that includes the salary and benefits. That's $50,715.52. Under health and welfare, health department, reduce that to level funding, $17,078. I did reach out to the health department to see what impacts that may have, and they indicated that they do have plans to hire another environmental health specialist to meet the demands for septic and well permitting needs in the Northern Act. They said proceeding with hiring such a position would halt, and further cuts would likely be made by eliminating an office service specialist who would provide administrative support and training for permitting vital records in clinical services. Just wanted to give you that, that additional information, if that was cut, what the, the impacts would be. Next, under health and welfare, Boys and Girls Club, they were asking for 15,000. And we had multiple requests from new departments outside agencies this year, and I think one suggestion was maybe look at providing a little bit to each of them. In this case, this would be a $10,000 reduction, which would allow $5,000 contribution to them. Food bank would be reduced by 4,000, and that would still remain at a $1,000 contribution. The Haven would remain at 4,500. That would be a $500 reduction. The Free Health Clinic would be level funded, $46,099. The Little League would be level funded at $2,000, so it would be a reduction of 23,000. The Greater Reedville Association was requesting 25,000, so a reduction of 20,000 to also give them the $5,000 donation. Julius Rosenwall School was requesting 10,000. That would be reduced by 5,000 to give them a $5,000 donation.
Back to, back to the Little League. You would give, we would save $23,000. What do we, what are we giving them every year, 25,000?
No, we, we provide them $2,000 annually, and they were requesting...
This was their request for this year's budget? So that's still allowing them $2,000 in the budget?
That's level funding them at the $2,000 level. They had requested, I believe, a lawnmower and then the roof. And the board did do the roof earlier this year. I was just double checking to make sure I had that in there correctly. Yes, sir. They, they requested 25,000. So a reduction of 23 would be the $2,000 contribution level funding. The 7102, 5604 Parks and Recreation, they were asking for an additional 25,000, in keeping with possibly what the board would want to do, reduce that by 20,000, provide $5,000 additional contribution this year for that. We already provide them $50,000 annually. So this is on top of what they were requesting for the, the pool cover. Under community development, 8101, 1,001, under planning, reduce that by one position, which is the Assistant Zoning Administrator, which I have in the current budget. That would reduce that by 73,423. That does include salary and benefits, and that's a vacant, vacant position currently. Under 8101, 3,004, repair equipment, reduce that by 1,500, which is shared with the building department. Postal services, it falls under the building department. That's a reduction of 5,000. Books and subscriptions, reduce that by 1,500, which is shared with the building department. The chamber, they requested an additional $1,000, so we reduced the, the chamber to level funding, but the Economic Development Commission in your paperwork had also requested an additional reduction to aid in doing a website and to use some of the funds that we provide to the chamber to offset that, that cost. Under CIP, the county CIP transfer, that was 100 and about 117, $1,417,000 in that line item. Do that by half, and I believe that was a potential grant for a body camera, and I'm not sure, has that, do you know, has that been applied for? You did not get it? Okay. So that's something we may need to go back and take a look at. School CIP transfer, reduce that by 691,391, which would equate to providing the school division half of what was returned in the fiscal year 23 audit. And that amount is... Other than that, the other item as far as capital vehicles, I'm not sure if there's any room there. You had two vehicles in there, Sheriff?
Yeah, that's two for replacement and then handle one. That's the extra position.
And...
Was anything left in capital improvement?
As far as capital for vehicles or for... The only thing that was in for capital improvements was the 117,000 for the body cameras. And then the other cost was the transfer to capital improvements for the school, the 211,954. And then the vehicles, there were two vehicles for 130,000. And the last item I have is the salary increase would go from 5% to a 3%, which would be decrease of 96,875. And what that would be is just for the, the county employees. That does not include the additional request from EMS and the sheriff's office.
All right. Questions, gentlemen?
You know, some of these things that I'd like to see we keep in that financial position. That's very important. We need to keep that amount in there.
Financial position, that's, that's to help out Mary. That's to help Mary out now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Need to keep that in there. And also, in my opinion, I don't think we need to remove the deputy position. Like I say, Northumberland, believe it or not, gentlemen, the population in North umberland is increasing more than any other county. I found that out yesterday. You have a lot of these people that come down for the summer, they're moving down permanent now.
Oh, yeah.
So it's very important we keep that position in. That's what I'm a vote for anyway.
Anything else, Mr. Plon?
Yes. Janitoral position, I think we need some help. Well, I know we need some help now.
JR got very much to do. JR got very much to do.
So we need some help now. We need some help in that health department, too, believe it or not. And you can check, we, we serve more people as far as the free health clinic, food banks, than anybody in the Northern Act. The oldest ones ahead of us is middle sex. You can check, you can check that, all right? So we got quite a, and you, you know that we have two of the oldest populations in the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
The likes of Northumberland. And the majority of these people, the oldest thing they receive is social security. Most of them receive a small amount, so. And a lot of these people use these services, so we need to, in my opinion, keep those things. For the free health clinic, we have a large amount of people using that. And we need to keep the, in my opinion, we need to keep that 5% in. That's all I...
Keep, keep salary at 5 instead of 3. That is, that's what...
It's 96,000 or different?
97,000 rounded off, yeah.
We need to try to keep in, keep up with some of the other counties. I'm not talking about Westmoreland, but the other counties. We need to be right there with the public.
Okay. All right. You got anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else?
What is the overall change in the tax rate if we were to go with all these cuts?
As, as presented here, I was looking at a 4 cent tax increase. And we advertised in 8 cents.
Out of the organizations that are coming to us, asking us for money, which do we give to every year and which are new to us this year?
Boys and Girls Club, we have not contributed to in the past. We have worked with them on some grants in the past, but we have not provided an annual contribution to them. Food Bank, we have contributed to them annually. The Haven, we have contributed to them annually. Free Health Clinic annually. Little Lake annually. So really, it's the Greater Reedville Association and Julius Rosenwall School would be two new ones. And at this moment, it's, as far as I know, it was just a one-time request.
And the YMCA, we contribute to annually?
Yes, sir. We do contribute to them annually, and the, the additional request that they were asking the board for was additional 25,000 for the next five years.
How much do we contribute annually?
So it drops the tax rate down to 4 cent. What does it do for pulling the money out of the contingency fund?
We would be, now, this is, everything was spent out of the budget as, as presented, which we know that's not going to occur, but you would be still dipping into the undesignated general fund balance of about 3.2 million from nine, 9 million.
Bottom 6.7.
What about?
Hold that bottom 6.7 million. So if you start adding some of these back in, if you add salaries back in, and that's two. All right, I seen add the financial position back in. We can add, time a couple more things. We've added another cent, so it would be 5 cents instead of 4 cents.
Maybe hadn't done the school budget yet.
Haven't touched school budget.
One other thing, Rick. The Boys and Girls Club, you know, even if we don't give them but 2 or 3,000, it's very important. A lot, all that kid, the parents had to pay $25, I think. And a lot of these parents are able to work longer because kids can stay to the Boys and Girls Club till the parents get off. And a large percentage of these kids are run by single parent homes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Mostly women.
Yeah.
So it's very important that we do everything we can to help them. One way we can help, donating to Boys and Girls Club for keeping those kids, not all that they deserve, but actually teaching those kids things that would help them with their education.
I look at it that way, but I look at things in every angle. So I don't disagree with you, but for everything that we fund and we increase that tax rate to the same family that's, that's struggling, and we increase that tax rate, how are we helping them by providing more services for the children to do or what have you? And we put another burden on them for having to pay for it. So they're going to pay for it either in taxes, or they're going to pay for it as they go and use the programs. And I look at for the elderly that own those fixed incomes that are just paying the taxes. And it, and it's a tough decision because we got to look at for the young folks, and we got to look at for the elderly. We got a lot of good programs, and I'd like to see all of them be successful. But that's, that's how I look at it as well, you know? It's like we, we give all this money out and raise the taxes, and we still putting the burden on the home.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Fisher, you got anything?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Williams, you got anything else you want to... I know if we can get some of this IT off of us, that would help us. That's very much money right there. Jim, you say you want to try to keep that financial position?
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, that's, that's $135,000. Half a cent.
I mean, leave it in there. We just, at the end of the day, when we get everything settled, what we going to do? We need to take a look at where we land.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we're just talking with the county side.
Yeah, I know.
And anything with school?
No, still got school to deal with yet.
So...
We get a rough idea of what we think we want to do here on the county side, and we can either, we still cut it, or we can still increase it. Give it, give everybody a chance for it to settle into it. I'm not settle into your pocketbook. Yeah. Even though I was told the other day that the board supervisors didn't have to pay any county tax. I'm glad of that.
That's well...
Y'all didn't let me know that. You didn't let me know that.
But it's somewhat counted up.
Have you, have you always had to pay tax, Jim?
A lot of.
I've always had to pay it. I never got anything free often.
No, I even start paying early.
On your postal service, where did that, well, all right, I should have looked a bit better. That was across the whole, across the whole board for everybody, wasn't it?
No, that, that particular one was for building and zoning.
They had that much additional postage?
They...
That in the increase in postage?
They, it had increased it by that much, and so we, what we did, what, they have that amount because they take all of that for all notifications for the hearings.
Yeah.
Zoning appeals, board of supervisors, public hearings, and all of that is actually coded to the building department under the treasurer's office for that postal machine.
All right, okay.
So that's why that's moved from planning commission or planning to the building department. But that covers both building and planning. It's not just one department.
So under your IT part with your RDA software, that was something that the auditor recommended the other day that we look into doing, and hopefully, if we can get it on board, it should be a cost saving to the county, more than what it's going to cost to implement.
This, this particular module was, we've talked to the auditor about this.
Okay.
But this is more of a result of the, the processes and different things that we've been going through for the forensic audit.
Okay.
To try and help streamline some of those processes. But we have talked to the, the annual audit auditor that we have about the, some of the modules for RDA.
Okay.
So that, that's coming later.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about is another one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is a different one. We got that to think about, too.
And, and this is something that we're looking into further and looking at how it would work with our current system. So it's, we're still trying to make that decision on that.
Well, what y'all think about salaries? Salary increase? Put it at three or keep it at five?
I like to say it's keeping at five. For my vote. Shouldn't go back. We're going to keep up with some of these other counties around us. Need to. Like I said, not, not Westmoreland, but the others.
We should be.
I don't keep, yeah, I don't think it's in a way where we can keep it Westmoreland.
We're talking county employees. We're not talking sheriff's department and EMS.
No, county, county employees.
Right.
And it, it may be a possibility that five puts us up how much on the tax?
Five is ninety.
Ninety-six thousand.
Say ninety, ninety-six, eight, seventy-five, so ninety-seven thousand, I was gonna say.
We're talking three, so what would four be?
Quarter cent. What would four do?
Yeah.
I imagine that would probably be what? Fifty-seven-five thousand, something like that, Luttrell.
We ran four percent on the entire county. We did not run four percent with the proposed sheriff and EMS, so I'd have to run some additional numbers.
Wonder if we could give them a decent raise without breaking the bank.
Yeah, I, I see your point there. We got to, got to try to look at for employees.
Yeah, we ran three, four, five, six, seven, five with EMS and sheriff. Three with EMS and sheriff. So we ran every scenario except when you.
So you explained to us the other day that comp board positions going to get six percent over two years. Well, pretty much three percent.
Three.
Right.
Correct, three percent each year.
And that was one of the reasons why you were explaining to us that if we went with three, we know we had to do three again next year because comp board positions will get three percent and they don't pay upfront. You'll get half the money this year for three percent and half next year for three.
Right, and, and that's three percent on the comp board salary.
Comp board salary, right, comp board salary.
It's, it's less money.
Yeah.
Less money.
Well, you got to decide what you're going to do there. You're going, you're going to pay it again next year.
Yeah.
Well, as we're here for, we're here to talk this over a little bit. Ash it out, get some idea of what we want to do. Time is getting a little closer each day.
Sure enough.
So you trying to look at four percent, Mr. Fisher?
I'm just throwing that out there. I was going along with what some had said about taking care of our employees a little bit better and trying to hold on to them. Five is going to hurt us. Like to do five, but I, I don't see the monies there. Three is a bare minimum. Would four possibly be a happy medium? Happy to the point where their employees are coming ahead somewhat, not as much as they might want to, of course. But at the same time, it's not going to break the bank to where we can keep on.
Yeah, we have to make sure that we they then reach a distance of the other counties that Lyxton, Richmond County. We don't want to turn and lose people.
Well, I got. Sir, Beecham, have you heard, what's Richmond County doing this year as far as their pay raises? I'd heard nothing at one time. Did they change their mind or?
I heard the same thing, nothing.
Okay.
But that's been a couple of months.
Last, last I heard, they weren't getting it. The sheriff's department, weren't they were giving it all to the schools? That was the last word I got several weeks ago. Changed since then, I don't know.
Right.
I know, I know Lyxton's doing the seven percent, you know?
Yes, and they raised their starting salary, which you guys have.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Now, it may be one or two more counties that are not giving raises this year. I can't, I don't want to swear by it. It's only rumor. But I think anything that we do is going to be a lot better than what most are going to get.
Well, we can't do what, we have to make sure we do enough to keep our good people.
That's right.
That's right, Jim. You're right.
Wouldn't four percent wouldn't increase it by much, I don't imagine, would it? Forty, fifty thousand? Just if I'm looking at.
If you've got three and you got five, just split the difference.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at that ninety-six thousand, eight, seventy-five. If that's two, if that's two cents, so you can figure about half of that.
Yes, maybe half.
Fifty thousand. And that'll put you at four. And I may be way off, but I'm just making a rough guess. Something else on here y'all want to consider? Or not consider? In the janitorial position, that was, that's benefits and everything.
That's correct.
That's basically right at a quarter cent, a little bit less than a quarter.
I think we need to look at the school budget before we make definitive decisions on these items we're discussing. Because both of these budgets need to somewhat gel together.
And that's what's going to set the tax rate.
Right.
And how much money we're going to be pulling out there.
We might look at the school budget and say we, we can make some cuts here. We need to make some increases here and those decisions will help make these decisions easier.
Yeah, right.
You really think so?
Not that they're going to be easy, easier.
Glad you changed that a little bit.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Let's soften the blow.
All right, what do y'all want to do? You want to move on to school budget or whatever y'all want to do? Y'all the boss now.
I think you hit the point where you got to.
Probably done all we can do on county budget right now.
What do you say we want to do with the deputy position?
Mr. Chairman, I, I got one question I would like.
Yes, sir, come on.
Okay. Planning assistant zoning administration.
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-three thousand, four hundred and some.
Yep.
Deputy sheriff position. Seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four.
Okay.
Finance position, why is that like seven thousand dollars higher than the deputy?
Mr. Tadlock, I'll let you answer that one.
Yeah, so what we used is the, it's called a JAT assessment scoring tool that we got from Evergreen. It's the consultant that we used for several years ago. So that I was just trying to get to the spot here in my budget. The position finance specialist, budget analyst, when we coded that, was about fifty-nine thousand. Was the, the salary.
That sounded more in line, I would think.
So the eighty-four, six, eighty-five includes benefits?
Includes benefits.
That, that's salary and benefits.
And so the sheriff's position, deputy position and the, and the janitorial, when that also includes benefits?
Yeah, all of those include benefits.
Well, that still doesn't answer my question.
Yeah, the.
Fifty, fifty-some thousand less benefits, fifty. Well, the assistant was how much? Fifty-some thousand?
Fifty, the, okay, so the finance specialist budget analyst is fifty-nine thousand. Believe the deputy was fifty-five thousand?
Yeah.
I don't have my request in front of me, but I, I think I requested a salary or hiring range in case I had somebody apply with experience. And I think that was up to either ten years.
That's exactly what you said.
Yes.
And that's what I understood. And that would be at the high level.
Correct.
Chances are, you might hire somebody that needs to go to academy and it'd be much less.
Yes, sir.
That's up to find out. And I'm trying to find the discrepancy between, between the finance position and the deputies' position. It looks like to me the finance position is high for some reason. Not that we don't need it. I certainly agree we do need it. I think Mary needs all the help she, she does a wonderful job. Anything we can do to help her, my golly, today, we need to do it. I'm just looking at the difference. Why deputy would be what did I say, seven thousand dollars less than the finance position.
And janitorial would be what, thirty?
Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-two? All right, what are the qualifications that you are thinking about asking for a financial position? Any? Oh, just red off the street, green is can be.
No, we, we would look for some experience in local government, accounting, bookkeeping, that type of stuff.
Okay.
Payables, budgeting, that type of stuff, more on the side of payables, payroll.
Okay.
I, I think one of the things that we are looking at is because of the system, the RDA system and learning that, if they can certainly learn payables and then transition into, to other items.
All right.
And of course, as the sheriff stated, his, his figures down here relate to an individual with prior experience, same thing.
That's right.
Yep. And still is great much difference.
And like you said, if he's got to send one to the academy, you can't expect to pay the higher wage.
Be a lot less, be a lot less.
Janitorial position, any background in that or just?
No, I, I would just, if they have experience in janitorial work, that would some, be something we would look for.
Yeah, okay. All right, planning assistant, that goes down to how much less benefits?
Fifty-nine, I think you said.
You were asking about the assistant zoning administrator?
Yeah.
That's fifty thousand, forty-eight.
Fifty thousand, forty-eight. And how much experience would you want for that?
There again, we would certainly ask for any experience. We didn't have a, a time, like five years' experience or anything tied to that. And we're, we're currently working on the job descriptions.
Okay.
But we hadn't gone too far with those because we weren't sure whether or not the positions would get approved or not.
All right, anything else on this county before we move on to something else? Mr. Tadlock, I guess we'll move on to something else if you want to.
All right, so the other item would be the school budget. The board did request some additional information as far as what the amounts would be for a salary increase and the health insurance increase. So on the table, you have what a one and a quarter percent increase would be with the health insurance, which is three hundred twenty-six thousand, five eighty-six. What a three percent increase would be with the health insurance would be five hundred forty-one thousand, three sixty-six. And a five percent increase with the health insurance would be seven hundred eighty-six thousand, eight twenty-eight. And then I, it just provided the sheet that Ms. Booth had provided to the board earlier regarding the revenue update.
The 1.25 percent, that was included in the budget that they advertised, right?
That's correct.
What are we figuring, two seventy-seven on a cent?
Uh, one cent on tax levy is about two eighty-five, two eighty-six.
Two eighty-six, all right. Two eighty-six, that changes things a little bit. All right, gentlemen, what do y'all think? Schools asking for what, for 1.2 million now? I think it was 1.7 and they got what, five hundred and some additional thousand, thousand dollars more money?
From the state.
From state. So that would bring it down, I think, of 1.2. And if we make some cuts in that.
I think we need to look at funding that raises in the insurance increases and level fund the rest.
All right. Yeah. We all gotta remember that we told school employees we were gonna do the same thing for them as we did for county employees. So, we gotta look at it for them. I'm not gonna, not gonna abandon them. I'm gonna do the same thing. Make sure they get the same amount of raises county employees did.
We've got, every year, we've had a lot of cuts on the county side. And we got a lot of cuts on the county side this year. But I don't see how we're gonna fund some of the things we need to fund. We don't make some hard decisions. Because I know an eight-cent tax increase and going into the contingency fund for 6.7 million dollars, this ain't gonna fly. You take 6.7 out of it this year, and next year, you're gonna go right back at it, take more out of it, and next thing you know, you're gonna have zero. And we in a tough spot. We just gotta make some decisions.
Right between a rock and a hard place. And where you gonna turn?
There's no need to turn. Might as well just make decisions and go forward.
So, if we take the 1.2... Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to go by what you've documented. Are you wanting to explain it?
Well, it's all gonna come down to whether we're gonna do a three percent increase or a four percent increase or a five, depending on how much we're gonna have to put in to give to the school system. We know right off the start that it's a hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars for the health insurance. And they had requested it 1.25 for the teachers. That's another hundred-and-fifty-three thousand. But when we were talking about the five-cent increase, they also sent in their numbers to match what we were gonna give the rest of the county. And now, I believe that was another four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. I don't have the paper in front of me right now, so...
Yeah. What is it?
Four-sixty something.
Ms. Tadlock, you got that number?
You're right, am I right on that?
Yes.
So, it's gonna depend-
Four-hundred-and-sixty thousand additional.
All right, four-hundred-and-sixty thousand additional. That was for five percent, a five cent.
Five cent increase.
All right.
So, it's gonna depend on whether we do a three, or we do a four, we do a five, or...
Well, if we decide to do five across the board, I'm just flapping off here.
Right.
That's four-hundred-and-sixty thousand right there. If you... I'm just talking there. If you leave the 1.2, that gets you right back to 1.7 again. You're still right there, you haven't done a thing.
Right.
So, what are you thinking now, Jimmy?
Run that by me again then.
All right. The extra revenue that it got from the state to five-hundred-and-thirty-some thousand dollars, we take that 1.7 and bring it down to 1.2.
Right.
All right. If you do a four, a five percent, that's four-sixty. All right, so that's, puts you right back at... You're looking right back at 1.7 again. You haven't made any cuts, but you've funded the employees. Am I correct, Ms. Tadlock?
I'm sorry, I was doing some other math over here.
I'm just talking about that we back at... That the additional money that received from the state would bring that 1.7 down to 1.2. And if you fund the four-hundred-and-sixty thousand on top of that, that basically brings you right back to 1.7. Very close.
The four-hundred-and-sixty would be for the five percent salary increase.
Yeah, be for the five percent salary increase.
Right.
So, you're basically right back at it. On this thing you've done so far, say, five-hundred-and-thirty thousand. And Jimmy, now, you talking about, did I hear you say level fund?
Well...
All right.
You gotta watch how you say that.
Yeah, that's what I need to know. What is your explanation of level fund?
No, I think we need to, you know, if we're gonna do anything, look at giving them the same amount of money they got last year.
Have you run the numbers to see how that would, what the end result would be if you did level fund and gave the three percent increase? Have you run those numbers?
No.
All right. What if, if we funded the five percent and turned around and took six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand away? They're still getting more money than they got last year. Plus, they're getting their increase in wages and salaries. And we saving a few dollars. A whole lot, but we saving... We saving five, we saving six-hundred. Is that correct, Ms. Tadlock?
So, I'm not quite following what... You're taking the 1.2 and subtracting the 675 from the 1.2?
Yeah, from 1.2. That would give you... If you take, just say seven, so figuring if you want.
Five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, seven-eighty-four.
Yeah.
So, what you're saying is, instead of doing a 1 point, the 1,210,000, seven-eighty-four, to do an increase of 535,000, seven-eighty-four?
Yeah, I think that's right. See what that works out, gentlemen?
Where'd that 675 come from, I'm sorry?
Just a number to take. That'd be less money to give.
Okay.
Take that much away. Just something to think about, that's all I'm saying. I'm just running numbers. Unless y'all want something different. Yeah, want more, less, whatever.
What's the state increase again?
State increase was five-thirty...
I just viewed 530.
Oh, Lord, what was it, 530-some thousand? Can't remember all the other numbers with it. Did I have it? Let's see if I did have it. State was five-thirty-six, seven-twelve. There was additional funding they got from the state. I'm just hoping for suggestions, I don't know. Y'all run some numbers, see what y'all want.
See, I'm wondering if you can actually, and I know it's additional revenue to the schools, but if we're tying the state funds in with the county funds, then that's gonna make that number higher. We need to look at what the county's contribution is to the schools, not what we can afford to give to the schools.
Yeah, we'd be down to... From there, 1.7 down to 1.2. By using the additional state funding to bring the county portion down. But if... And I think you're thinking that if you don't use it... Is that what you're thinking, Jimmy?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's additional funds, but I'm just looking at... At this point, what can we afford to give? What can we afford to do? It's just like your county budget. What can we afford to put in?
Yeah, well, that's right. What can we afford to do? That's what I wanna try to work out.
You're saying what can we afford irregardless of how much money the state gave?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's...
I'm asking.
It is additional funding, yeah.
Right.
So, you take a five-cent salary increase, it's four-hundred-and-sixty-some thousand. That is basically a cent. Basically, one cent. Not quite one cent, but it's close enough.
It's more than that, right? It's closer to two cents.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-six, yeah, it is. Sorry, close to two cent, I mean, sorry.
But a cent...
My mind slipped up there, thank you. So, that's two cent right there. And that would raise us back from four to two, I guess. Or maybe not quite that. I just don't wanna try to do an eight-cent tax increase.
It would take us from four to six if we did all the cuts that were presented to us tonight. And it doesn't sound like we're gonna do all those cuts. So, we're gonna be back at eight cents.
We gotta make up for it some way.
Yeah.
And we're coming right back up again.
So, just throw this at you.
All right.
Figure the amount that the salaries and insurance is gonna cost. And right across from the county side of the school budget, do a 1.5 million dollar reduction. Add that amount back in, and that'll be your...
Say it one more time, so I get it.
Figure the amount that we're gonna give in raises. Figure how much the schools will get of that for their insurance and the salary increase on the county side of the budget. Do a 1.5 million dollar reduction in the budget. Add that money back in, and that would be your savings.
All right, so we do five cents, that's four-hundred-and-sixty-some thousand.
You got a 1.1 million dollar reduction.
Yep.
You said do a 1.5 million on the county side?
On the county side. Add, add the teachers' salaries and the insurance back in it. And I'm just throwing a number right there. And add that back in and subtract it from the 1.5. And that, what's left there would be your reduction in what would come back to the county. And like I said, and I'm just throwing a number-
Give it to me one more time, say it again, one more time.
Take a 1.5 million. Say we're gonna reduce the school budget from the county side, 1.5 million. Determine how much money the teacher's salaries is gonna be and their insurance. Add that back in it. Subtract that from the 1.5. And what's left there will be your reduction on the county side of the school budget. Because we, you try to tie federal numbers in, state numbers in, you're not, it's too confusing. We, I could look at it at a local level.
Where'd you get the 1.5?
Off the top of my head.
Off the top of your head. It's just a 1.7 increase.
Right. Well, you use 1.7?
Yeah, that was a 1.7 increase there.
But I was trying to...
Put the, put the additional state funding they got, cut the county's portion back to 1.2.
That's why I use 1.5. Between 1.2 and 1.7.
I'd give them a 1 point, basically a 1.1 or 1.2 cut.
1.2.
1.2 cut.
I mean, what I'm looking at, too, is that's where we at in the ballpark on the county side. And that's where we could possibly be in the ballpark on the school side.
Special, what are you thinking? I haven't heard anything from you.
Well, I'm sitting here listening, it sounds good. Sounds reasonable. I won't say good, because it's got a good point to it. But I would last like to ask Lucko his expertise and what he thinks of it. Mainly, I'd like to know the downside of doing that.
So, their original budget was, for the additional cost to the county, was 1.7 million dollars. They received the additional, was it 536,000, seven-twelve from the state after they went back and looked at the capital. So, that's, that dropped it to the 1.2 million dollars. What, where they are getting that 1.2 million dollars from is a portion of that is based off the composite index in trying to make some of that money back up that they lost from the state.
Well, it was federal, right? Federal or state?
The state.
State, okay.
So, I would probably go from that 1.2 rather than do a 1.5. If you go 1.5, you're going, if you reduce it by 1.5, you're going lower than what they currently have this fiscal year. And if you do... If you do a, say you start what they have this fiscal year as your base, and then you add three percent to that, so the 541,366, if that's the increase, and I'm trying to understand where we're going with the discussion. If you add that 541,366 to the current amount, they would be getting less monies for fiscal year '25 than they perceived for fiscal year '24.
All right. So, we're down to 1.2 million.
Right.
All right, additional health, additional health, I mean, the health insurance and the wages on 5%. the wages on 5% would be is 460, what is it, 460,000. All right, you got a 1.2 million increase. All right, what if we just wipe the 1.2 million off and give them 460,000?
Let's do them.
And just let it go right there. That's funded, that's funded the salary increases and everything, and we've also made a cut.
We've kept our, we've kept our promises to teachers.
We've kept our promise and everything, but we've done, but we've made some cuts. That'd be the easiest way to do it. Just take the 1.2, wipe it right off, and give them 460,000 dollars.
That, and I guess that's what I was trying to get at. We were looking at...
Yeah, I think that's where you were trying to hit, Peter.
Anywhere from 800 to a million. What I'm looking at, budget-wise, we need to find $2 million to keep this tax rate down.
We already found 1.2. We can find the other, no problem.
And that'll keep the tax rate down, and we'll be able to afford to take care of some of the things that we need to take care of that are, right, you know, pressing pretty hard, and...
How does that sound to y'all?
I don't like doing it, but...
No, don't like it, but we got to do some changes. We don't have any choice. We have to.
Well, we've been saying that for six months. This is merely doing what we've been saying we're gonna do.
It's time for us to do it, or else just keep quiet.
So, in, in that 1.2, is the health insurance increase in that already, or not?
That's, that's in there.
In there.
The 1.2 includes the 1.25 percent increase.
So, I'm just saying, just forget about the 1.2, but then go ahead and fund the health insurance and everything, and, and the salaries.
So, you're looking at 400?
460,000.
Okay.
Well, you, you said that we, you had 1.2, and I assume you were in cuts, and I'm assuming you were referring back to the county budget, right?
County portion.
County portion, right. But if you're talking that 460,000, which would be the 5% salary increase for the schools, that 1.286 million on the county portion is not gonna be there, because that was including a salary increase of 3% from the county employees. Is that right?
No, wait, wait a minute. I am wrong on that. It included 1.25.
That, that included, the 1.2 million dollars included a 1.25 percent increase...
1.25.
Plus the 7% increase on the health insurance.
All right, we could turn around and do... We could do 7, 700, and do that. I've just roughly figured in my head now.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that 700,000?
Forget about the 1.2. Wipe the 1.2 right off the map, and give them 700,000.
Okay, so you're, you're, what you're talking about is the, what we're giving to them currently, the 14,268,416, plus 700?
Plus 700. That funds their, that funds the salaries with no problem.
And that's if we go with 5%.
That's if we go 5. If we do, if we do 3 or do 4, 3 cent or 4 cent, we can reduce that.
I was stuck on 5.
Yeah, that would put us back at 5, yeah. Which is what you were kinda hitting around, you were thinking about. And that's what I was looking at that way.
All right, so we done lost, we done lost some money that time.
Uh... We're gonna have to make, we've got, we gotta make some cuts some kind of way, but this is still helping promote something. But it's also making some cuts where we can put money somewhere else in the county.
Am I wrong in saying that the school board proposed a 3% increase for their own employees?
They had a 1.25. They'd already given the other. And any additional we do would be extra money. So, if you leave the budget as they have it, and we give 5%, that would be 460-some thousand dollars, 460,000 dollars additional funding. So, if you go back and you take out the 1.2, and then give them 7, you've already, you picked up that 1.25 again.
Guess my point is, why are we considering that? I'm all for looking out for county employees, all of them, teachers, sheriffs department, everybody. But why are we considering doing that when their own, own school board didn't recommend giving, giving their, their employees that much of a raise?
Well, if, the, the, the way I'm looking at it, if we, if we give county employees 5 cents, what I had said to, to the public, to the school teachers, that whatever I give county employees, I'm gonna do the same thing for the school employees. And that would be doing the same thing. I'm not gonna give county employees 5 and give the others 3. No, no, no. I'm not gonna do that.
I understand that.
So, that's why I'm just saying, let's just forget about the 1.2, give them 700,000, and that gives them 5 cents.
So, if you give the school 5 now, you've automatically given the county 5.
Yeah, you give them the county 5, too. Everybody gets 5 across the board.
And we need to figure out, and we gotta tally in all the, what we're not gonna fund.
Yeah.
And see where we at, because we still may have to go back and make...
Yeah, and that means, like you're talking about right now, means we go back and look at that county budget now, and we, we, just to boot, we got school budget taken care of. But go back, look at the county budget, see what we can take out to get, to get that additional money we need.
And start off with employees getting 5.
And we start off with employees getting the 5, so you put that 98,000 and change back in. And then you take the rest of the cuts.
I think we need to keep in mind that, that, for me, I think, in looking at this budget this year, our main priority is to make sure that EMS staff and sheriff's office can get their salaries up to where they need to be, so they can be competitive. So, in doing that, we need to make, keep in mind, you know, we may not be able to fund everything, every position.
All right.
Before you go any further, that's already still included in, in our budget. That was not taken out EMS and sheriff's additional funding.
Correct, the, the way that that is currently in this...
We haven't touched it.
Okay, but we still looking at the tax rate, and we still looking at money coming in to do contingency fund.
Yeah, but we're not looking at as much coming out of that reserve fund, contingency fund, what do you wanna call it? And we're keeping our tax rate down somewhat. I, I just, I don't wanna pay 8. I don't wanna pay, have to pay 8 cent more. Don't think anybody does. You comment any time you want.
No, I, I guess it's more of a question based off of a 5% given their, their amounts. That's 786,828.
Yeah, that's, let them make the rest of it up out of the budget.
Okay, no, just as long as...
Yeah, that's, there's always enough cushion in there. There's cushion in that budget. Let them, let them do that. They can, they can make some changes. But we've still funded, we've still funded everybody 5 cents. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I, I like that.
All right, now, if y'all have read it, if you're done with the school, go back to the county, and we'll pluck at that some more.
Take a break.
Take a break?
Take a break.
10-minute recess. Call this meeting back to order. All right, gentlemen, what y'all wanna do now? You wanna go over and look at the county side?
Sounds good.
All right. So, your total cuts here, Mr. Tadlock, were 1.286,929.26 on the county side?
Yes, sir.
You add, you add the four positions back in, that's adding back in 286,000 dollars.
All right, so that's $1 million cut. Yep. That's, uh, 2 plus 4, 4 cents.
Okay.
Rough, roughly 4 cents.
Keeping the financial, finance position.
You say you wanna try to keep the financial person in?
Yeah, and also help for the janitor.
For the janitor?
Yeah.
That's 130,000, 135,000. Actually, almost, actually 136,000. Close. Excuse me. What else y'all gotta think about? You also gotta remember, we gotta put that 96,875 back in, too.
Close that one.
That's gonna be, if we're gonna do 5, if we're gonna do 5% or 5 cent, that is, we gotta put that back in.
Right.
So, we're down to what? 9? Somewhere close to that. 903, 835.
What, are you taking back out again? You taking, considering the salary increase, the county administrative position, right?
Yeah, uh, keep the, keep the financial position in, the janitorial position in, and then keep, uh, keep it 96,875, 875 for the salary increase.
Let's see.
What's the number coming to, Jimmy?
Uh, wait a minute, I gotta redo that.
You're just excluding three items, is what we're considering, right?
Yeah.
Two positions and the salary.
Yeah, we're adding those three items.
Adding.
Yeah.
I got $1,054,652.90.
Can be.
Do it again.
You got 96,875.
Oh, you're right.
How about that?
And then you got the 7, you got the, um...
You're right.
50,715.52.
Okay.
And then you got the 84,685,84.
232,276.
What, I forgot. How about the deputy position?
We haven't even talked about that yet.
I think we need to, uh, talk about that.
So, what does that come to if we take those?
232,276.
232,276. If you take that away from it, we're down to a little over a million.
We don't need to take that position out now, that deputy position, if all possible.
See, it's gonna fall apart if you don't get it?
A million 54.
See, you see, you see Johnny's gonna fall apart if you don't get it?
We, we got a, we're increasing with people, so we need to keep that.
Yeah.
We need to keep that in there.
Million 54,000, right?
Yep.
With those threes, exclusions.
Yeah.
Can we talk about the deputy position for a minute?
Yeah, we, we can talk.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we...
Johnny, wouldn't, um, you have one position now that's not filled, right?
No, all the positions are filled. I just have them assigned someone to the SRO at the middle school yet. They're all my positions given by the county are filled.
So, you don't need any, anymore?
Oh, yeah. I need an extra one. I'm trying to, I started the request in fiscal year '23 with a goal to add a position, one position for the next three years, to grow the department to meet the demands we're seeing. So, this would be the second of the three of my goal to, to grow the agency.
Would the extra, would the extra position help you with your overtime?
Once we get people out of the academy and fully staffed, it should help some.
Yeah.
Yes. It would help with those who are working extra shifts, yes.
Would it offset enough to justify the salary?
I doubt it's gonna offset overtime that much. I doubt it's going to offset overtime that much.
Sure. Have, have you heard that, uh, North Thunland, uh, one of the highest growing counties populated? I just found that out yesterday.
So my understanding is an article, that there was an article in the May, last week of May, the addition of the Echo, that there was a report in there, and I, I didn't get the, the paper, I didn't get the report, but it mentioned that.
Right.
Um, population wise, we're growing.
Right, growing.
We were.
That means you need every deputy you can get, you know, with the population increasing like that.
I mean, you know, just, you guys see it. Food line on a Tuesday at noon. I mean, it's, it's not like I've ever seen it before, before COVID. So that, that's an indication of what, what's here, who's here, and how, how many. Traffic is up.
Right.
And Sheriff, isn't it true that a deputy's position is not just out here doing law enforcement? You got so much activity, anytime there's more paperwork with the court system, serving of papers, that's one of our main, one of your main objectives, is to serve the court papers. They have to be able on a timely basis. And there's many things besides just law enforcement that the sheriff's department has considered in. School resources, and you talking about the school resource officer, won't you have to put that in place along about August?
I would have to do it before August because they have to go to school in July.
Okay, so it would be a new person who wouldn't have to go to school, yes, yeah.
All right. All right, if we keep the sheriff's deputy in there.
Right.
That would mean that we would be seeing a cut of nine, seven, seven, two, five, eight, point nine zero. I'm correct.
Nine, seven, seven, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine, seven, seven, two, five, eight, point nine zero. And you can just round it to nine, seven, seven if you want, or whatever. Make it easier on you, on you to, or whatever. That would get us to that point, and that puts in, that puts a salary increase in, puts the janitorial position in, puts the deputy back in, puts the finance position in. And that would, uh, we'd make a nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety cent cut. That would put us at, um, I guess it's right at a three and a half cent cut.
So you're looking at a four and a half cent. Three and a half from the eight?
Yep, to the back, four and a half. That's if we, if we go back, we get the school budget again, make some changes there, again, we can get it down to, to, um, get four cent off, no problem. Cut that by another, two, two hundred thousand will give us four cents, a little slightly over four cents. So we'd have basically a four cent tax increase.
All right, let's see. So you were talking schools earlier, seven hundred thousand.
I already said seven, we take that, cut it by two.
All right, so down to five. Okay.
Got to keep us at four.
All right.
Roughly figured it close enough.
All right, I'm looking at both sides of this now.
Yeah, looking at both sides, the sheriff's getting what he wants. So he won't be giving us tickets.
Yeah, if you do five, if you do five hundred thousand for the school.
Don't count on it, don't count on it.
And you're going to do that five percent increase, that's not covering the teachers' raises, so it's not staying in line with what we said, so we need to either.
Yeah, but we, we've taken out more, we've cut their budget back by additional two hundred plus, put in that, um, that other money. For the raises.
Okay.
All right, we, we dig back into their budget again and cut it another two hundred thousand.
So you're still going to put the seven back in?
Yeah, and we'll put the seven back in for the, for the salary.
Okay.
And we've funded salary like we said we're going to do.
Okay. All right, so that'll give us.
Is that all right?
Yes.
All right, let's see. Said it was nine seventy-seven.
Looks like the most you can do with what you've got.
Yeah. School budget, let's see, what are they asking, let's see. We're going to take one point two, we'll take one point four right out of it. And then we'll fund it right back with seven, which will fund the, yeah, we'll take one point four right out.
Okay.
Out of it, and then to keep our word to the school teachers, we'll put an additional seven hundred into it, which will fund their salaries.
Okay. So that would get us back up to, uh,
And that should hold us somewhere about four cent tax increase.
One point six.
Am I correct or wrong, Luck?
Uh, run that by me one more time.
One point two. Increase, cut it by one point four. Cut that budget by one point four million. All right. To keep our word for the school teachers, we'll fund it eight, we'll fund it seven hundred thousand more. We'll give them seven hundred thousand on top. Basically, we give them five hundred thousand.
So, five hundred thousand, sorry.
All right.
Five hundred thousand dollars extra on top of the current.
One point two million dollars additional county funds.
Right.
All right. Just wipe that right off.
Plus two hundred thousand. You said, that's one point two, you said one point four earlier.
Well, one point two.
Okay, okay.
We take one point two completely off.
Okay.
All right. Salary increase is roughly seven hundred, maybe a little bit over. All right, so if we fully fund the salary increase, to five percent, no, to five cent, not percent, five cent. It's seven, seven eighty-six, I think is exactly what it is.
Something like it, yeah.
So if we fully fund that, we've given them a little over five hundred thousand dollars to fully fund it. And we made a little bit of cut in their budget. Plus we made, right at the same amount of cut right in the county budget, we're both right, very close.
We're both at, yeah.
We're very close, the same amount of money at, at both budgets. So it's, balance of scales, fairly decent. And that should keep us right at about four cent. Still got to dip into the contingency fund, reserve fund, three point two million.
Damn, I ask the same question I did last year. What's that going to do for next year? What's that going to set us up for next year?
Tax increase?
You're going to see a tax increase next year.
Well, what I'm looking at too is, you can't keep going through the well.
The well go dry.
But it does leave a heck of a lot more money in that contingency fund.
Right.
Where it keeps us at a much better operating level.
Yeah, and that's where we need to be.
Next year, we're going to have to look at it the same way, we're going to have to make cuts again and keep it down. We don't want to be dipping much over four over, along, if we dip that much.
Well, you're not putting four back in at the end of the year.
No, you're not putting four back.
So sooner or later, you're going to get down below the amount that, that you should have.
Right.
And that's sooner than later. And I guess what I'm getting at is I don't want to keep digging this hole deeper and deeper every year, and that's what we seem to be doing.
Well, you know you'll have the same amount of money again next year that you'll need to fund everything. And then you then decide whether you're going to come up with a big increase on everything or not. And if that's the case, then you got to, have raised taxes again. Not that I'm crazy, but raising taxes anytime.
Now, I think it's getting to a point where you, we're going to have to start saying no.
I, I, I don't, I don't see that.
Taxes for three years straight.
Because we, like I say, we, we get more people in the county, that's, that's going to have tax and everything, so.
Yeah, you're right on that, Jim. The more, the more people you have there, the more money we'll get.
Right, so.
And when you look back over the last three years, we didn't, we didn't raise taxes, and we probably should have, by a cent, a two cent alone, and we might have only had to maybe one or two cent right now.
Yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape. And we're doing the right thing to help people.
Nobody's going to like the increase in taxes.
We're doing the best we can, we got to work.
There's not much we can do about it. Well, what y'all fellows want to do?
Well, I think we need to go ahead and make a motion. Have we gone a number of days we, we have to go?
For the school budget, not for the county budget.
Oh, not for the county budget.
We're one day shy of the county budget.
We've gone a number of days, right?
You can't do a number of county budget yet. You want to give luck to, all right, we can give luck to the amount of money we want to fund the school with, if you can get the numbers straight.
Take care of everything tomorrow night.
Take care of everything tomorrow.
And we can give him basically what we want on the county side, and he can get the numbers straight. And then tomorrow's coming and we can finalize it.
Right.
He, can you?
Right.
That going to press you too tight? Yeah.
He can do it, he can do it, but, well.
And I'm also thinking about Chip. Chip wants to, he wants to say bye-bye to us.
Well, don't let that go into your decision making. Don't let, let that affect what you do.
Well, I'm just trying to accommodate you too.
I appreciate that.
The one challenge that you are going to have, and I don't know, for the school budget, if you reduce that, um, and if you keep that in categories, we're going to need to know what categories the school division wants to put those funds in.
That's, that's.
Well, we can let them decide what they want per category and come back and, and.
Right. I hope I does best.
We can, but we can't do the appropriations resolution. If you do the appropriations resolution, you put the full amount in, they're going to have to come back and ask for transfers.
So you're saying.
What if we just tell them, without making a motion, that this is what they're going to be getting, or let you tell them? And tell them to put it in the categories, amount they want, come back to us, and then we'll make the motion. Is that doable, or is that wrong?
Yeah, we can. I don't know that they would be able to do that by tomorrow night, though.
Well, you can ask. I believe, I believe they would put forth the best effort.
They interested in the budget?
Right, I think they could. If you, if you get that to them.
Well, the, the salaries is one category already set, right? Pretty much.
No, it's not all set. They'll have to look at their categories a little bit, but we need to, we need to keep it in categories instead of give them a lump, so we don't need to do that. So if we give them, we cut their budget by, it goes back to one point four, is what it goes back to. And then we fund the five percent increase, which is seven eighty-six, I think is what it is. All right, that's how much money they're going to get. We funded their salary increase for the teachers and everything, and then they can adjust their budget accordingly. Is that right, Luck?
So are we doing five hundred thousand or five eighty-six, eight twenty-eight?
All right.
You, you just said that, totally two different.
I know, I don't, it, it all comes out the same. If you cut it, if you cut it one point two, and then give them five eighty-six.
All right, well, let me re-figure, because I was figuring on five hundred.
Yeah, you told me five hundred earlier.
Yeah, I know. Or, or, I'm looking at that, it's, it's eighty-six dollars, eighty-six thousand more there, I think, for the salary. Um, where is it? Here, eighty-six thousand more. So, that way it would be, it would be funded.
Why should we put them on categories when we don't have any other department, county departments like that? That's not being fair. I remember when we did have, uh, we didn't have categories.
Yeah, I remember we didn't have, didn't have it even, when we all talked. We all sat down and talked and worked the budget out.
Right.
And, uh, that hasn't happened for a long time. Did I confuse you all the way, Luck?
Yeah, let, let me just back up and regroup here.
Yeah, I confused you. Like I said, just went completely over here.
No, I got.
What are you laughing for, Drew? Drew's over there saying, I'm glad it's him instead of me.
Hurt the day like that. Straight out and grabbed. Done? He was already dead. Twenty, almost twenty-two inches. Laid him up real quick, got some fleas off, and put him in the pot for the puppy ducks. There you go.
All right, double check behind me on this. So, they are currently getting fourteen million, two sixty-eight, four sixteen, which was approved fiscal year twenty-four.
All right, fourteen million, two sixty-eight.
Four sixteen.
Four sixteen.
All right, so you are saying add five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars to that amount?
Yep.
So that would give them a local portion of fourteen million, eight fifty-five, two forty-four. Did I do that right?
How much does that look?
Fourteen million, eight fifty-five, two forty-four. So if you're doing an increase of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars, that's a. So if you're doing an increase of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, that's a decrease from the one point two million dollars that we were talking about earlier, to six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine fifty-six.
Yeah. We're decreasing that one point two.
So if you take that, there, what they were asking for, for their total budget, was twenty-two million, one fifty-three, and twenty dollars. And you subtract the six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine fifty-six, their total budget would be twenty-one million, five twenty-nine, oh six four.
Twenty-one million. What was that number again, Luttrell?
Twenty, twenty-one million, five twenty-nine, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, and sixty-four dollars.
What was that?
Twenty-one million, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, and sixty-four dollars.
That would be the budget for the upcoming year.
Well, what we're looking at is taking the county portion, that's down to one point two now, and reducing that by one point four, actually. And then if we fund it, or if we leave it, if you, but then we'd have to put one point, I mean, we'd have to put seven eighty-six back in to fund the salaries. So if you reduce it by one point two, and put five eighty-six back in, it funds the salaries.
Right, so you're, you're looking at doing an additional five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight twenty-eight, on top of what this fiscal year's amounted.
No, no. You take in the one point two away.
Right. So this fiscal year is fourteen million, two sixty-eight, four sixteen.
Yeah.
Their request was fifteen million, four seventy-nine, two hundred.
Yeah. Where is it?
We have a sheet.
Oh, here it is. I'm, what, I guess what we're looking at is that they have asked for one point two million dollars from the county. All right. So, we only wanna give them five eighty-six.
Correct, on top of what they are currently getting for fiscal year twenty-four. Right, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would put you at, uh, be five eighty-six on top of that. Is that fourteen million, eight fifty-four, four sixteen, or did I figure wrong?
I've got fourteen million, eight fifty-five, two forty-four.
Eight fifty-five, two forty-four. Fourteen million, eight fifty-five, two forty-four.
Fourteen what now?
Fourteen million, eight fifty-five, two forty-four. Yeah, that's what we wanna give them.
Okay.
And then they can, they can put that in their categories.
All right, so their, again, their total budget is gonna be twenty-one million, five twenty-nine, oh sixty-four.
Twenty-one million. All right, run that again.
Twenty-one million, five hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars.
Yeah.
Oh sixty-four, yeah, that's our total budget.
That's the total budget.
So what's the difference between the county funds, if we, if we agree to those numbers this year and last year?
County funds, we are.
Last year, it looks like the county funds were, uh, what was the fourteen, two sixty-eight?
Fourteen, two sixty-eight, four sixteen. So the difference would be the five eighty-six, eight twenty-eight. So we're reducing their one point.
I guess I mean, from what they proposed.
Oh, from what they proposed.
Well, this spreadsheet, I agree, they proposed sixteen million. Is that right?
I don't have that on me.
And the overall budget to the school would be, if done like this, would be four hundred thousand dollars less than last year, roughly? Overall.
Somewhere about that.
It would be a reduction of four hundred thousand.
All right, is that what y'all want to do?
So we gotta get this information to them.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Give them this.
Yeah, and then after that, we should pay to pass it.
Yeah, we can pass the budget.
Well, you're gonna get that to them as soon as possible, right, Luttrell?
I, I will. Yes, sir. There, I don't know what their, their turnaround time would be to get it within the categories.
I guess if they don't get it back to us, so we can make the decision Thursday, at a normal board meeting. Chip is leaving Friday.
Don't let my schedule be the basis of how this.
Yep, you can always do a remote if we have to. Take your laptop with you. Could do that.
I think before we say we're gonna finalize anything, I think Luttrell needs to run the numbers.
Yeah, he's gotta run the numbers.
To, uh, to really determine where we're at, before we, we may have to go back to the drawing board again.
I hope not.
I hope not either.
We need to pass that, we need to pass that school board budget.
This is just a, this is just, just a start for them to get the numbers straight, and tell them, tell the school side what they're gonna get.
How many more days do we need to, I have to wait before we pass the county budget?
One more day. We, we can take action on it tomorrow.
Now, is anything you wanna do different on the county budget? We're already taking nine seventy-seven, two fifty-eight, point nine zero.
Yeah, there, there's some things in there that I, we're gonna need to clarify, though.
Yeah, you, you'll have to touch it up.
So, under general administration, if we can go through those, and get some sort of, um, action by the board. The, so the position you want to leave in? Don't, don't cut that position for the finance.
Finance position, I think everybody wants to leave that in. Isn't that correct?
Right.
All right, leave that one in.
All right, um.
Janitor.
Well, let's, let's take the categories, if that's all right. Um, the professional services for the eighteen thousand for the county attorney. How did?
Take that out, I think. Is that right?
Yep.
All right, the board wants to take that out.
Take it out as in, leave it as a cut?
Leave it as a cut.
All right, and then the IT contracts, telecommunications, IT computer, leave those as cuts.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Do we need those? Need those?
Take, take them out.
No, I, we've, I've talked to, um, Mr. Headley, and I think there, there's some areas that we can cut there. Judicial administration, telecommunications, cut that.
Yeah.
All right, now, under public safety, you wanna keep the deputy position?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we wanna keep the deputy position.
All right, and then all of the building, uh, the advertising, telecommunications, office supplies, and vehicle supplies, cut those.
Cut those.
All right, under public works, janitorial position?
Yes.
Keep it.
You wanna keep that one. Health and welfare, health department.
Have you talked to, uh, what's her name? The head person, eh?
Uh, it's, it contacted Brendan Riverbank, uh, earlier, and that was the email that I, uh, read earlier, about the, the impacts it would have.
Well, if we take it out, it's got, uh, possibility that they have to reduce the staff, right? Is that right?
Right, they, well, what they were doing, they were looking to hire another environmental health specialist, so they would put that on hold.
It's not gonna reduce the rest of the staff.
And then, uh, depending on, it, he went on to say proceeding with hiring such a position would halt, and further cuts would likely be made by eliminating office service specialists, who provides administrative support and training for permitting vital records in clinical services.
Is this something required by the state, or required by the, what?
I could not answer that. I, I don't know.
Take it in. Pleasure, boy. Leave it in, take it in?
Yeah, I said, keep it in. If it's, uh, I don't think they'd be asking for it if they didn't need it.
If it's gonna improve their time on getting these septic permits and all that?
Right.
It might not be bad, but I doubt that's gonna improve anything over.
You don't think so?
No, they're slowing cold tar now. Do we, do we have a sanitarian on site here all the time, or is it, or is someone rotating around and around?
I, I can find out.
And if they do hire this one, will this one be in Northumberland County?
That's the next thing, is that person gonna stay?
Because right now, they, they're rotating around and around, from what I understand. And I don't wanna fund a position that they're not gonna be in the county.
Could, could we, uh,
Find out.
Find out, and before we do anything, let, let Luttrell check on it, see if they're gonna be in the Northumberland. We can decide on that.
All right, um, Boys and Girls Club? Reduce that by the ten thousand.
Is that what y'all wanna do?
I said, keep that in. I know they import us some. That's my vote.
What does everybody feel?
Well, if we start adding back in, then the numbers don't change.
If we're gonna do that, I've got one that I wanna see bumped up also.
That's right. If you, if you get one, then we gotta add them all.
Well, we gotta add the ones that we, uh, we're not gonna add them all, but those, uh, that's the one I, uh.
Well, I know, I know the one Chip's talking about, he wants to add in.
I do, I, I mean, and I'm not against them getting every dime that they ask for. That's the Greater Reedville Association, I think they provide a service to the county and,
What about you?
The Greater Reedville Association. And, um, they have a venue down there unlike any other in the county, and people from all over the county use it. And I would like to see us provide a little more help than what, um, is proposed here on the sheet. They came to us asking for a dollar, just a one-time contribution.
And that's why I had the suggestion, put a part of money aside for the one-time contributions and be done with.
Okay. All right, what are y'all thinking?
I'd say we should keep that Boys and Girls Club, Reedville Association, and if we're gonna keep that, we gotta keep Rosenthal. Those three down.
Well, that's ten. That's five and fifteen, and what is the Greater Reedville Association, that's five also?
They're asking for twenty-five, and I'd like to see them get every cent of it, so.
They're asking for twenty-five, we took twenty away, so they're getting five.
And you got your YMCA that.
Well, we give them already, right?
Yeah. Well, we give them fifty.
We give them fifty, they're looking for their, um, contributions.
But I sent them a donation, so that helps.
Yeah, I, that's what I heard.
A donation helps, too.
Every bit helps.
I just wrote a check yesterday, I sent it to them.
Hey, Chip?
Yes, sir.
It was a big one, too.
I bet it was.
Hey, every little bit helps. You know, a little bit, it all helps. Are you gonna sign up for swimming lessons? You signing up for swimming lessons?
No, I already have swimming, so I'm, I'm all right on that.
Oh, you're gonna do laps?
Yeah, but I'll do that.
All right, so if you keep that in, and that's ten.
So, the, the five thousand dollar extra going to the YMCA, that's, that's a continuous, that's not for five years, it's not for, that's just gonna be an increase?
No, I, I was looking at that as just the, the one-time.
The one-time, okay.
Yeah, and whether that's given for the next five years, or however the board wants to do that. Uh, that was just a starting point, and.
That was, that was specifically for the pool covering, right?
Yeah.
All right, so, what do y'all wanna keep out of all these right here? Keep the boys and girls, or take the boys and girls out, or reduce it?
We keep going back through those pages, we're gonna be gonna edit everything back in, and then we could start off with the way.
Well, that's true. I know, but I'm trying to find out so we can, we can move on. But I wanna get on to the next item.
Yeah, Boys and Girls Club, the Reedville Association, Julius Rosenthal.
You're gonna put, wait a minute now. Reedville's already getting five. Julius, Julius Rosenthal was asking, what, for ten?
Ten.
And they got five.
Five.
Why don't we give them, give Boys and Girls Club five, too? That way they all got the same thing.
Right.
How about that, Luttrell?
Okay, that, that was what was recommended.
Yeah.
You know, it was.
Instead of giving them ten.
Because Boys and Girls Club was asking for fifteen.
All right, they got five.
Five.
They got five. And we've taken the rest of it out. Everybody's basically got their five.
So, all right, so we're back to keep all of those as the proposed cuts?
As the proposed cuts.
Okay. All right, that's the YMCA?
That was 5,000. They wanted twenty-five, and you take twenty.
Correct.
And I guess we'll leave that as is. Is that right?
Right. What are they going to end up, five?
They'll end up with fifty-five, instead of fifty. All right.
All right, so the Assistant Zoning Administrator?
I think we have decided to take that out.
What's that?
Assistant Zoning Administrator, we take that one out.
So, keep that as, we've got it?
Yeah, keep it as you got it.
And then the remaining parts of that, for the repair equipment, postal services, and books, and subscriptions, leave that out, as, is it on the sheet?
Yeah, I think leave everything else the same right there.
All right, now, the chamber.
Chamber.
I'll leave that with the 1,800. Their request was an additional 1,000.
What do y'all think?
We've been giving them what?
We've been giving them what?
We've been giving them 14,000, and they requested 15,000. But...
If we're going to promote this county, if they do that, I don't think $1,000 is going to hurt us.
If they're going to do that.
You on that board? I know they used to be pretty good, I haven't heard recently.
I haven't heard anything out of, out of Manuel. Haven't heard a word of him, and he's usually hot and heavy on me.
Yeah, I was on it for one time, they were real good, I haven't heard...
I haven't heard anything out of, I don't know if he's on the board or not this time.
Well, with the 1,800, we would be reducing there, we wouldn't be level funding them.
We'd be reducing them.
We would be reducing it. So, you just want to level fund them?
Level fund.
Level fund.
All right, so that would be 800 coming off of that. All right. All right, now, and this is why I want to come back to this, because county CIP transfer, we had $117,000 in there, and took half of that for a potential, the body camera grant. But it sounds like, didn't get the grant, so how does the Board want to proceed on that?
You didn't get the grant, Sheriff? All right, what's the pleasure of the Board on that? What is...
Do we need new body cameras?
Absolutely.
I expect that to be his answer.
Absolutely. The cameras we have now are obsolete, no longer made, cannot be repaired, so when they drop like flies, they're dead, we can't resurrect them. This is state-of-the-art, a lot of new features with it, interchangeable batteries, which we didn't have before, so the original cameras, which we were operating on our original cameras from 2017 and '18, once the battery went dead, you had to put it in a charger. They did come out with a car charger later, which we bought a few. So, that's kind of where we are. They are a necessity nowadays, more than just a one.
It's a safety issue.
They're the greatest things since sliced bread, let me tell you.
But unfortunately, with technology, so there's, you know, a price comes with it.
So, basically, what you need is 117?
I need the entire amount that it costs, yes.
117.
No other opportunities for grants there that you're aware of?
It's usually once a year, so no, sir. We looked at the Arbor Grant I got, and they excluded body cameras from that, that's where I bought the cars and the pistols, and they did have a grant come out, and it's not that, I said we didn't get the grant, we had issues, I had issues submitting it, thought I submitted it, come back the next day, found out that I hit the wrong button, didn't hit a button, so it's all on me that we didn't get the grant, it's not that we weren't awarded it, we didn't get it because of me. So, I want you to know that.
You need to add up some of your savings account now.
Hey, listen. May I remind you of the money I saved on the radio system for radio?
Sure, sure. I thought you were getting ready to tell us that you had your checkbook with you, and you were going to cut us a check.
I can cut you a check, but it won't be for 117,000. I can probably do $117,000.
That's a help. We don't turn anything down.
Okay. So, that's where we are with body cameras.
I just made it all of it, I think that's one thing we need to put back in.
Yeah, we need to put all of it. So, I guess the way the Board's looking at it, I guess we ought to put that 117 back in there.
Absolutely.
No, that's why I want to go back through these.
Yeah.
All right, so the school CIP transfer, 691, 391, and that's giving them a little bit of money to help go towards CIP projects. Doesn't fund everything, but it does start the process of putting money towards that program for them.
So, say that one more time.
So, yeah, let me get back to, so the school CIP amount would be 211,954.
Okay.
211,000 what?
So, we would be reducing that by the 691,391.
So, we still be putting 211,954 in there?
Right.
You all want to leave it as Lutz has it?
With the 200,000?
Yeah, we're putting 211,954, and we're making the others a cut.
You put that back in there, that's going to change the game all over again. We're going to have to go back and find some more money from somewhere else.
All right, let's talk about it. What do y'all want to do? Keep on explaining, Jimmy.
That's 600 and some thousand dollars that you've taken out of what you've identified as a cut. That's half of what you've identified as a cut. So, I mean, we're looking at, we went four cents, back up to probably six?
We've cut it 691.
Right, well, we're not going to add that back in there, right?
No, we're not going to add that back in.
All right, we're good then.
No, no, it's only 211,954 is what's going in.
We're good.
All right, is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
All right, leave that as it, leave it as it, as you have it.
Okay. Now, for capital vehicles, we've got $130,000 in here, and that was what was requested on the CIP side. And is that two vehicles?
Yep.
That's two vehicles. Now, with the additional deputy, you need a third vehicle?
So, we're going to have to add 65,000 back in.
Right.
Your Honor, you got that check?
I'll look for it.
All right. All I know is the man sitting next to you, you got it.
It's in the mail.
In the mail. All right, so it looks, so if Johnny's going to have his extra deputy, we got to fund a vehicle. So, it's up to y'all, fellas. That'd be 65,000 we'd add back in.
Really, can't walk up and down the road?
Right.
We can get him bicycle.
Bicycle. A doggy mule.
They got those electric bicycles you can get. No, that won't work nowadays.
Oh, yeah? Oh, sure, if you're getting ready, you're wearing your welcome, okay?
So, this is a stretch. I could probably stretch an older vehicle one more year, but expect me to come in and ask for an extra vehicle next year. So, we're picking the can down the road, so I just want to let you know, if you're really pinched this year, I can, I can help out and not write that check.
I bet if you just write the check, too.
You're asking for a lot. So, it's just food for thought, if you...
So, how many would you be looking at next year, just off topic here?
Probably five, if you kick one this year. If you don't fund the one for the extra position this year, you can expect me to ask for five next year. Because four is about where we go most of the time, because of mileage and age.
Yeah. All right, what if we were, I'm just running my mind, what if we were to go ahead and fund that this year? See what the numbers look like. To y'all.
Put it, I mean, put it in, and you see, and that could be one of the things if we have to.
How many miles are you going to try to get on?
So, we're going up, I just took a car out of service and sold it, it had 155,000 miles on it. That's a lot for a police car, if you figure in the idle hours and do the formula for the miles, we did it, that engine probably had 268,000 miles on it.
How many miles per hour? I mean, how many miles for one hour idle?
One hour idle equals 33 miles.
33 miles, okay.
So, you know, think about it, I don't know what your habit is of driving your car, but if you went to a job site, and you just left your van running all day, or for a couple hours, or, that's kind of what a police car is like.
It's not unheard of, go to an accident, sit there and idle for two hours or more.
Sure.
Things like that. Domestic, may sit there for a couple hours.
Yeah. So, we figure those miles in as well.
Gentlemen, keep in mind, here in Northumberland County, we are working off 24-hour patrol. We're not like Lancaster. That makes a big difference, it puts a strain on men, equipment, and everything else. So, you've got this 24-hour patrol, you're going to have to pay for it. But it's what the citizens want, and it's what we've had for how many years?
24 hours, we've probably been...
Certainly been 15 years or more.
15, 17 years.
But that means it's a deputy on the road 24/7.
Depends on what's going on, we're 200 to 320, 350 miles a shift, depends on what's going on in the county.
All right, so we go ahead and put that back in the budget. Is that what the Board wants to do?
Right. But, just to keep in mind, we only had two cars in there, so we would be adding to the budget, it's not putting it back in, it's, we would be adding to...
Yeah. Thank you for the correction. I guess we want to add that.
That's under the CIP. But maybe, okay.
All right, and then the last item is the salary. You're looking at keeping the 5%?
I think we're looking at keeping the 5%.
Keeping the 5%.
Okay, and that does include the adjustments for the sheriff and the EMS?
Yep.
Which is above the 5, okay.
Dollars, 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 and a lot of them.
All right, let me, I'll redo the sheet for you all.
That's fine.
And then, let me run some additional numbers, and I'll get with the school division and see what we've got.
That's fine. Sounds good, Love. You did good.
We'll see tomorrow, when the number's back to you.
Well, tomorrow's another day now. You might be done bad by tomorrow.
What happens if the school board comes back and says they can't put it in categories?
Then they going to get a budget?
Put it in categories. No reason, they want us to put it in categories?
They want to get your contract set, you know.
But we need to consider that down the road.
Then we will.
I don't know why we...
I think that's the control that we need. Yep.
All right, anything else we got to do if it's budget right now?
Do we budget it?
All right, Mr. Tadlock, what else you got?
I've got several closed-meeting items. Do you want to discuss those tonight, or do you want to do that tomorrow?
Y'all want to stay a little while longer?
No, let's do it tomorrow night.
We got a lot more tonight now.
That's all right.
At least 11 o'clock tomorrow night.
That's all right. 12, a little after 10.
Do you have closed-meeting items for tomorrow night also?
I've got it on both agendas, because I wasn't sure how long tonight was going to go.
Come on, Mr. Long, let's knock out one, two of them tonight.
Your nabs might not last you that long tomorrow night.
If that's the case, we will entertain a motion and go into closed meeting.
So moved.
As soon as Love gets his, gets everything straight.
I need a motion that Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-11A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, Section 2.237-11A7, for consultation with legal counsel and/or staff pertaining to specific legal matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the Board's negotiating or litigating posture, and Section 2.237-11A29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms or the scope of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. All invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator and assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and their presence will resply aid the Board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.237-12F.
Move that we go into closed meeting.
All right.
Second.
All right, got a motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you, Johnny.
Need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convened in closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hany, aye. All right, we're back into open meeting, and you want some action here on one item?
Yes, on the wood debris.
All right, who wants to make the motion?
I make a motion that we do not accept any of the bids for the wood debris, and that we will rebid it in the near future.
All right, I got a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, that's all we need action on. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, got a motion to have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.